Sure.
Okay, call this meeting in order. Let the record show that Commissioner Middleton, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner from on the present. Commissioner Flores will be late, so we're gonna move this item to the very end. His son is having emergency surgery this morning, so he'll be late. Please stand for the presence of the delegates.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first of all, we're gonna table Amistad acres number nine. We're gonna table to the end, hopefully that Commissioner Flores will be here by then. Item ten and eleven will be canceled by the request of Commissioner Flores. We're also gonna move items eleven and twelve, I mean twelve and thirteen, to number one and number two, sorry. So that's, I know some people are here for that, so we're gonna move item twelve. We're gonna discuss a possible action regarding the bid submitted for the construction of the Defense Control Center project at Laughlin Air Force Base West Gate. Go ahead, Mr. Muscles.
All right, let me start. My, going over all the bids that came in and the bidders. We had Albright Construction of Texas, Fontana Construction, KW Construction, Bartolvento LLC Construction, and HJD Capital Electric, Inc. And they also submitted bids on a timely basis. The bid for Albright was three million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven. Total bid that Fontana Construction submitted, four million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred. KW Construction, four million, nine hundred and thirty-one, I'm sorry, four million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred. Bartolvento, five million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. HJD Capital Electric submitted a bid of five million, eight hundred, six dollars, I'm sorry, eight hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. On the second part, I'll just put it up there for the judge, refer back to it. Second part of the valuation is on quality, and I'm gonna get Mr. Willis to elaborate on that and answer any questions related to that. But as far as the bids, they're pretty straightforward.
Do you need to focus on these?
I can see it.
I can see it.
I'm afraid if I start messing with it, it may get, it may get worse. I think our IT guy is here, he can work on that.
No, I think it's me.
Oh, okay.
Call the O.R.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
It looks clear to me. Well, next time we'll bring a big screen, so the judge can see it. I'm sorry.
I do not have a slide presentation, but I think I can take you through the process that we looked at in the bid evaluations. We put together the bidding criteria based on some previous projects that we've had. And we've learned in the past that although you can accept the low bid, sometimes you need to look at the qualifications of the contractor, because they're not all equal, and they all have certain strengths and some of them have weaknesses. So in the packet that I, or the letter that I sent to Mr. Muscles, we sent a, included a copy of the bidding criteria that was included in the bid documents and was used by our team of evaluators to evaluate each and every one of these bids. Our firm was only part of that team. We had nine members. We did the evaluation, and we had two from our company, we had two from the civil engineer, we had two from the city engineering department, engineering department, and we had two from Laughlin Air Force Base, plus one person from the county. Each was asked to fill out a scoring sheet and evaluate each of the bids on the basis of, we call them bid criteria. There are eight of them, and in the specifications, they're numbered three point one through three point eight. We tried to avoid as much as possible subjectivity, opinions, feelings, that sort of thing, and looked at these, these submittals on the basis of what was in the specification. For example, there's a requirement for a safety plan. We looked at the five respondents, and they responded at different levels of, at different levels of response. They, some had more and some had less. But those were evaluated and stripped the course with the items, yeah, the items three point one through three point eight. Item three point eight was the bid dollars, the dollar amount. And you look at the, on the left, and there we go, the criteria three point one through three point seven, those are qualifications or capabilities. Item three point eight is the bid dollar amount. So as you can see there, Albright was, had the highest score for item three point eight because they were the low bidder. The way that particular item was graded is, we call it an inverse ratio of scoring. For example, if you're exactly what the bid or the estimate was, you get a fifty, actually you get a hundred percent of fifty percent. Item three point eight, the bid amount, counts for fifty percent. The other seven items count for remaining fifty percent. So I don't want to go into detail and describe each and every one of the criteria, but as I said, three point one was the safety plan, that was the first one that you can see.
Your recommendation is what?
Well, we recommended KW Construction.
For two points, we're gonna spend a million dollars more?
This is based on the scoring of the team. It was not, it was not.
No, I mean, understand, but I mean, there's a million dollars difference in bids over two points, difference in score.
Well, total score.
Total score. There's a million dollars.
If you, if you look at the evaluation of the seven items and the qualifications and capabilities, that's, that's what swung the thing the other way. I, I agree that, you know, that if it's unrealistic to go with a bid that's eight hundred thousand dollars over what the estimate was, then that's your decision. But we, we feel that the consensus of the nine members on the review committee was that the project could be best accomplished with KW Construction, but that requires finding eight hundred thousand bucks.
Yes.
So.
That's hard for me to justify. When I look through the stuff, I can't see anything in there that tells me that Albright can't do it at the price that he bid it. I don't see anything in his performance, I don't see anything, I mean, anywhere in there that would prove to me that he can't do it.
Well, again, that, that would be your decision. When we looked at things like his staffing, his manning, his experience with, this is a lead building, a green building, L.E.E.D., his experience in that compared to the others, it's not just his experience, it's a comparison. Then the basis for scoring gives him a lower score than for other firms. Some of the firms have extensive military experience, which we think is a big plus. He did not have extensive military experience. And I'm not, I'm not bad mouthing Albright, I'm simply saying that when you start scoring these things, you have to look at some, some rule of engagement there. And his, his numbers just came out last. So, so, you know, go ahead.
I asked you to follow up to that, I'm sitting here looking at it. The first set of numbers that we had, I mean, I had some concerns, and I'd called, I think on Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
And that scoring.
It was, we revised it.
Okay, it was a lot. This is the correct numbers now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we made.
Yours, on criteria, you have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you have basically eight things to be scored on. And if you take away price, he is the lowest scored, five out of seven.
Yes.
Is that right? And that's across the board, he is the lowest scored. The only thing that got him, the only thing that got him to be two, number two, or the eighty-six point two-five average, was the price.
That's correct. And he was well below the, we had a professional estimating firm do the cost estimating, it's CCM Construction Services. They're really good, they're really professional, and Albright's number was substantially below CCM's estimate.
It was like twenty thousand.
I think it was a little more than that.
You're three point nine nine seven, and your estimate is four million, nineteen thousand.
Probably, yeah, okay.
You're talking about twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Difference between his bid and what the construction estimate is.
Right.
I've been in this long enough, we learned on the Luke project, that the construction estimates are a long ways. We, you know, I, I've seen these things happen before. We had a construction estimate on that project of sixty-seven million dollars, the bids came in at thirty-two. You know? And I also understand the issue of contractors that have the potential to not be able to complete projects, but that's the point of the bond and all those issues that go with it. If we're talking, you know, twenty, hundred thousand dollars, I get it, but this is, this is a million dollars, almost a million dollars, eight hundred and seven thousand, almost a million bucks. That's a lot of money.
It is. It's twenty percent over what the construction estimate was. The, the thing I have to come back to is that this was not my decision or our company's decision, this was a consensus decision by the evaluators.
No, I understand. I mean, I understand how we got there, I mean, I.
But it's a hard, it's a hard decision to make because finding eight hundred thousand dollars is maybe not, not possible.
It's interesting that all of the safety trench bids were around ten thousand dollars, this was seventy-one thousand for trench safety. That's a substantial difference.
Again, we, you know, each contractor does their own thing.
I mean, I understand.
Go ahead, I wanna ask Mr. Muscles first. Did Albright meet all the bid specs?
Yes, very good.
As far as that is concerned, there's no reason to question.
They're all, they're compliant, yeah.
It's all in compliance. And they all have, they're all bonded companies?
Oh, yes.
Bonded insured.
Insured.
You may recall on the, on the first bid, that one of the firms was disqualified because they had failed to respond to, I think, four of the seven criteria. This time, all of the contractors have responded, they did have a response, the kind of response varied, but they all met the criteria.
I'll make a motion to go with Albright.
Second.
At three million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
There's a motion, a second. Any other question or discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose?
I oppose.
Oppose? All right, three, one.
Can I ask one?
Well, KW is pretty much out of the, out of the deal, because when you look at everything else, the only thing that scares me, Commissioner, on this one, is that he did score lower on, on five of the seven deals. I mean, what, what can we have in place in case, I mean, there has to be something in place, or who's gonna manage this to make sure that we don't get too far behind with this guy? I mean, how does this work?
Well, part of the specifications required that they have a full-time construction manager and full-time, several management positions, safety people. Those didn't really appear in Albright's proposal. He's had, he had those duties responsible, or identified, but he didn't have the people. So that, that hurt his evaluation a bit.
So going into it, how do we make sure that he has people there to do this job? I mean, we're, you know, and I agree with the rest of the commissioners, I mean, the first, that, that bid of the four point nine, and then you look at the other bid where the other companies just, just taking, comparing apples to apples, the trenching, that was pretty simple.
Yes.
You know, you have a ten compared to seven, but, but the only thing that concerns me about this one is, is that he has five out of seven scores that are the lowest of all five companies. So what do we do, once we award this to him? How do we make sure that he doesn't get so far behind that now we are having to call on the bonding company? I mean, is there, is there measures that, how do we do this?
The contract documents, the bid specifications are pretty tight. His responsibilities to the project, to the city, to the county, and the air force are pretty clearly defined. If he fails.
Let me rephrase the question. Who on our part's gonna make sure that this stuff gets taken care of? Who? Is that your job?
It's partially our job, but I think.
So it would be your job?
Yeah. But we.
Call, call, that's a very, okay.
The principal technical responsibilities, Carl is the civil, well, Carl is, Carl Bain is the civil engineer. The project was designed in two parts. They would have some responsibility for the civil responsibilities, that's the roads, utilities, all the parking, drainage, grading, all that would be under Carl's purview. The architectural would be under ours. The responsive, his, the contractor's responsiveness to the, well, Laughlin Air Force Base gave us a section of the specifications, it's called Division One. It has specific reporting requirements in there, it has specific design and construction standards. I think I may have told you this last time, that all the inspections, quality control inspections on the project will be conducted by Laughlin. And so Laughlin will have people on the, in the field, on the job, that'll look at the contractor's progress and confirm, for example, when he requests to be paid, that he's done this work and he's entitled to do it. But as far as the actual enforcement of the contractor's contractual liabilities, there's no one person, it's gonna be spread between these various parties.
And that'd be my only question, and my only concern would be is, at some point, we just sort of, before the dog takes off running too far out in front of us, that we sort of have an idea of which way he's running.
It's entirely possible that, that before, and I would have to defer to the lawyers about this, but before you executed an agreement with the contractor, the low bidder, that you asked him to reaffirm his ability to perhaps increase his scores on these particular items, because if the, if the.
But I mean, even, even right now, if you're looking like at your safety, I think the lowest was four point one, and he had a three, which he was, well, the second lowest was four point one, and he had the lowest of three.
Yes.
I mean, it seemed like that would be y'all's job to make sure that y'all are happy with what he's fixing to do.
It comes back to the air force, because, you know, the, the air force wants things done the way they do things out there at the base.
I understand. But I, I'm just wanting to make sure that, that we have some control over what, what's going on, once it gets started, before, you know, we start trying to catch up.
You have control. If he signs the contract, and it's based on the contract documents that we put together, the county, as a contracting agent, has control over what he does and how he performs.
I understand that, but you just said right now that there's not any one person, I mean, there's gonna be a group of y'all.
That is, that is, that's true.
And that, that also scares me. But either way, there's a motion, or the second, there was a vote. I will say this, if the motion would have been for them, I wouldn't have been able, I would have had to abstain. One of their members is part of the bank, so, just for the record.
So, you have a comment?
In the original grant, there is, and then there is a many side for a project manager that the county appoints to oversee all of the construction. So that's up to you guys, if you want to, I can give you the breakdown on it, but how you do this is up to you.
Could we give that to Carl or somebody? I mean, I just wanna make sure.
That's why we're hiring Carl to do it.
And just to be real specific, Commissioners, just because, I mean, when we have questions, I'd like to be able to go to one person versus calling nine different people and getting fourteen answers.
That was the point of hiring Carl to oversee this.
What?
Help us with it.
Any other comment?
I was not aware that Carl would be the, the project manager, I think that's fine. But I do agree with Commissioner Owens that it's better to have one person that can run the traps and.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, Bean?
Thank you. All right. Okay, now let's go to item thirteen, discuss possible action regarding resolution to contract for a major defense economic adjustment assistance grant. Go ahead, bye.
And we had, last, last meeting, you all voted to get a contract from the only bidder, which is Carl Baines.
Motion to approve, second.
Has a motion, a second? Any other discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose? Four, zero. Thank you.
So we don't need, I don't think we definitely use.
Yeah. And yours?
Yeah, we don't need seven.
I think there'll be a signature unless.
All right. So we won't need to do eight and nine, so.
Well, eight we will, seven we won't.
Seven, I'm sorry, couldn't see it.
You're trying to eliminate them quick, that's.
All right. Thank you. The award was cut to Albright? Thank you. Let's go to item number four. The reason I put this one here is because I had, there was a typo on a regular meeting, discuss possible action moving payroll back to treasurer's office, but I like, I would like for Frank to give us an input on this one, because sometimes I am hesitant to move payroll back to treasurer's. Frank, would you come up here?
My concern about moving payroll, and believe me, if y'all wanna move payroll, that's one less thing. But if you move it, the department head has to be familiar with payroll. Fair labor standards regulations, IRS regulations, Department of Labor regulations. We do, on each pay period, the payroll, we calculate, the program calculates payroll tax deposits, but that calculation is done through the program, and there is a second step that is done.
The program is in your office?
Tyler, the Tyler program. But in order to cross-check that, we have Excel spreadsheets that calculates what the number should be. And a comparison is done on that on every payroll. And so that's one thing. The second thing that is done on every payroll is the insurance report. We get a billing for the medical insurance premiums for all employees. And if insurance information is input incorrectly, or an employee was omitted from adding a family member or whatever, which has taken place, took place this pay period, then if that reconciliation is not done, then one person in the county, or two people in the county, the insurance premium is not paid, and that individual then is not covered when they thought they were covered. So that's something that has to be done. Every month, we file a report with the Department of Labor. Every quarter, we file reports, our nine forty-one reports, TWC reports, nine forty-one is IRS reports, there's a nine forty federal unemployment report, there is the state unemployment report, and there's another report called the multiple site, multiple workplace site report. Which, when we took over payroll for the second time, it took us almost twelve months to correct that. If you move payroll, it needs to be moved to a department that the employees can ask the department head, what do I do in this case? I don't know if Aaron has that training. It's not something, payroll is not something you want to move to someone who has not handled payroll.
Okay. Your, your recommendation would be leave it where it's at? Okay. The issue that I have, and I don't know, is, the rest of the court has it, but by statute, you, you can, the treasurer has to have, I think, the part of writing the checks type deal. The, he can, there can be other authorities given to other departments, but I think in order to, on a.
You can't do a part in this department, and another part in that department.
How do I, how do I comply with the statute?
Well, I can tell you that throughout the state, there are county auditors that do payroll, and there are county treasurers that do payroll. And it is usually placed in the department that has the most experience with payroll.
Okay, but if, all the statute says is that basically he must write the check type deal. Other, other duties can be assigned to other departments.
Well, Commissioner Owens, the AG's opinions that have come out have come out because either one or the other department head is objecting to it, and so they want the AG to clarify. There's never been any situation where the county treasurer agrees that this is the way the situation should be. So if the county treasurer doesn't have a problem with it, there shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so then that needs to be part of the record, other than him sitting back there and just saying it's okay. I mean, he needs to come up here and say he has no problem with it. I just wanna make sure that we're as close to right as possible.
Yes, sir.
Right. So if, if the county treasurer at this time agrees on record that he would rather leave it the way it is, that way we don't run into something later on.
I have absolutely no concern. I am, I am in complete agreement with, with Mr. Low here, with it staying in his office. We have no training or experience doing this payroll before. Neither one of my clerks, except for my part-time clerk, has experience doing.
So as your, as, as your position as an elected official, being the county treasurer from Alberta County, you have no problem?
If I may.
Yeah, just say all that, that's what we can move on.
So long as, so long as we are as close to the statute and following the law, I am in agreement with the county auditor's office.
So you have no problem?
No problem.
Well, I, I've been through this before, numerous times, and I've been through the disasters that goes with it. So I have lots of concerns, but I'm like Commissioner Owens, I want us to get within as close as we can in compliance, but it scares me, period, 'cause I know what happened the last time, and I know what it took to fix it the last time. And it was not, it was not fun. And I don't wanna go through that again.
That, I mean, I just want y'all to be aware, it's not just, it's not just writing a payroll check.
Y'all know that.
I mean, there are cross checks we do with HR department, and there are a lot of responsibilities that, it's not just writing a check.
And again, the concern of the court is to make sure we get just as close to right as possible.
Sure. Make sure that we're efficient.
Until you leave, in October, you will be training the people that are remaining.
Well, I would hope, I sit on the committee that's going to interview the replacement. And obviously, one of the requirements are gonna be, they've got to have the ability to do that, so I don't have any qualms in the district judge's ability of selecting a candidate. So, um, I, I don't have any qualms in, uh, the district judge's ability of selecting a candidate that has the qualifications to do the job.
And that's why I called Mr. Lowe up here to make sure that he gives us a recommendation, 'cause he, I had talked to him about it. And, at the same time, I think he's working very hard to get somebody to replace him. And I think we do have somebody, but it depends on the district judges, so, we're gonna be working hard on that. Again, thank you, Mr. Lowe.
Mm-hmm. We have an interview actually, um, this Friday.
Right.
With a, a potential candidate, so, a local individual CPA, um, that, um, appears to have the qualification. The interview hasn't been taken place. But again, it's up to the district judges, not, not anyone else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Do I need a recommendation to keep it?
Do the motion.
Why don't you do the motion, keep it?
I'll make a motion to leave it where it's at, at the county auditor. Second.
There's a second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, if they by say aye, aye, all those opposed, nobody four zero. So, with that, let me jump into item number fourteen, 'cause it goes hand in hand. Discuss impossible action on hiring a firm company assistant appointment of anticipated vacancy for position of Albright County auditor. Now, the reason why that's, let me just comment again, what this firm is in case this applicant, on if it doesn't work, then we will go with this company. And the company is here, why don't you come up here, please?
Before we get started, since this appointment and this decision is made by the district judges with no input from this court, do we have the authority to go out and hire anybody? They do, I understand, the district judge does. But then, does that not overstep our authority, or the separation between the district judges, the auditors, and the commissioners' court? When we engage in the process of authorizing the hiring of anybody for a firm?
Again, uh, this is, this is something that they should be doing, but they're asking you to do. And Commissioner Owens brings up a good point, but that's Commissioner Owens.
It's the money.
They need the money to hire the firm.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but I mean, you know, the money is, is simply an issue of the district judges saying, "This is what we're gonna do, here's the order, pay the bill." I, I'm concerned about the separation that's, that's in the statute and the constitution to keep these positions separate.
The only thing they, I think the reason, uh, the judge got in and brought it was just the funds, just to make sure that we were gonna be okay. And we would actually have the money and avoid that discussion if they did go hire somebody and present us the bill type deal.
And it's providing a service for them.
Yeah, yeah. But, uh, he was just trying to make sure that, that we were okay with it. That was it.
No, I understand, I'm just, I'm asking.
Primarily, they should make the decision, but they're asking you to, they're actually asking the county to provide a service to them. And so, you're agreeing to provide that service.
Not, not the decision, but the service.
The service. Okay, so we have a, a firm, Robert Hall Firm, and we've got, uh, Mrs. Trish Pennington and, um, Mr. Ortega here. And if you all have any questions, you can address it to them. And Judge Galena regrets not being here, she has a trial going on, so, um-
It, it's all about the money, what's this costing?
Uh, right now, the fee is set at twenty-five percent, um, as a currency for the, um, recruiter has a somehow relationship with the judge. And so, he, and so, he, um, it's a twenty-five percent fee, and it's just on salary, it doesn't have anything to do with bonus, any, you know, anything else that goes with it, it's just whatever.
Now you're scaring me, now we're paying bonus.
Yes, there was a bonus. Um, but it's just on that agreed upon salary, um, which you hire, the individual.
Now, if we don't hire one from your firm, essentially we hire this person locally, we don't have to pay you that, right?
Correct.
Right, all contingent fee.
Had you visited with him?
I have not.
Oh, with the judges?
I have visited with the judge. As a matter of fact, I, I, I had a conversation with him Saturday or Sunday. And, uh, I believe we got an application, a local individual, on Friday.
Friday, yeah.
And, um, his comment to me was, "I just don't want to limit, um, the search to one particular individual." And, so, if the interview does not go well, he wants to have the option and not have a closed door, I, this situation. And, he explained to me also, and, and you can confirm if this is right or, or wrong, the fee is paid only upon, only upon the hiring of an individual that y'all recommend.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely. All the work we do is, work we do regardless of whether or not you-
If this court was to set aside some money, where would those funds come from?
You only have one way.
But you're-
Contingent fee.
This is not yours.
From him, from the one that didn't show up.
Obviously, it's, it's an important position that has to be-
Your payroll, is there any funds, like, in the payroll account, we set aside for the payroll account? I know it's all in the general fund, but there's money actually left through Trish and stuff like that, or you, you feel we're just taking it out?
Well, not within my department, so, there's-
We're talking about countywide, countywide?
Countywide, there is, yes.
So, it could come out of there?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I have no problem, the district judges wanna hire somebody to help, I, I'm perfectly fine with that, as long as we all understand the separations and-
They're, they're doing twenty-five percent. I mean, I'd ra, I'd feel more comfortable setting a maximum dollar amount. I mean, I, I know it's up to them, but it just sort of scares me that we've just given them, which they have, the, the blank checkbook. But it sort of scares me that we, you know, we've given it to them and just said, "Go do it."
Well, it strictly gets down, their fee, as, as I understand it, is based on twenty-five percent of the salary that an individual is hired at.
So, you could pay a maximum of, I mean, the numbers that I keep hearing are anywhere from where we're at now to a hundred. So, we could get twenty-five thousand dollars.
But, but we don't know-
Until they hire.
Yeah.
I have a question for the purchasing agent. Is this something that needed to go out for request for qualifications?
No, I don't believe so.
Should the professional services come through?
Okay. And, um, is this, is this contract exclusive to this firm, or if the judge wanted to hire, the judge wanted to hire another firm?
No, he's gonna hire one firm.
Okay.
And I think that's what you would be-
He did a lot of research. And, uh, he didn't just pick up, get the Yellow Pages out and look up. He did a lot of research.
We, could we do the twenty-five percent, say, a maximum of up to twenty-five thousand dollars? I think we're, I think you're overstepping, I, I think we're overstepping our authority. I think you're getting real close to overstepping your legal authority.
So, you're just gonna do a twenty-five percent, say, here's the checkbook? Just, you say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and because it's, the fact of the matter is, when they hired this individual, they are gonna write an order to this court that they hired him.
Add ex.
Or her, and this is the salary that you're gonna pay, and-
It is what it is.
Twenty-five percent.
It is what it is. The contracts, what, I haven't seen the contract, but, um-
There is a contract?
I don't know.
The, the, the letter right there.
Tea letter.
Yeah. And the terms are on the back, on the letter.
I think what he wanted was something from us saying that it would be okay, even though he can go do it anyway.
I think it's more of a courtesy, he wanted to, to let the court know that he was going to take this action, and for the court to be aware that there's gonna be a fee if they hire-
So, do we need to take any action, or can we just let him, can we give him his blessing, or what are we doing?
I don't think, I don't think there's any action needed by the-
We'd be better off not.
He can do whatever he needs to do. They are here again.
And I think that's all he wants.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And the money, if-
Thank you all.
Then we get it out of, like, out of the excess payroll or something?
Yeah, yeah, that's, we'll, we'll have that done, um, by the time the individual is hired. We'll have a very good idea of what type of surplus we're gonna have, overall salary, at, at that time.
Alright.
Thank you.
You'd be happy.
Alright, now let's go back to item five, report, uh, five report on, uh, Texas CBD D seventy-one thirty-four seventy-nine. That's fine, two minutes five, this is gonna be a while time. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Carl's here to do it.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Uh, I requested this to kinda give the court an update, you got a lot of projects going on. Uh, let me see here if I can master this. Not too good if I do.
Did a pretty good job there, Carl.
Pretty prepared for that. This is, uh, the grant county got.
Eight thousand.
A year ago. Actually, a couple years ago.
Yeah, that's bigger.
This is a grant that the county split between precinct one and precinct four. Uh, precinct one used seventy-seven thousand dollars of it for the tank that's installed out there at Escondido currently. And, uh, about the other half of it was, uh, extended to water from Duck Pond Road down there to Vega Berry. Okay?
That's precinct four, right?
Precinct four, that's correct. Uh, you can kinda see there, let me get out of the way there. Uh, this project basically closed down, actually got the closeout documents with me today. And, uh, the total, the total grant there was for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. You can see, uh, number of draws there throughout the contract period. The end date on that was actually made the tenth, two thousand sixteen, and we're currently closing that out right now. Uh, the, uh, this guy wanted to bring to the attention of the court that, uh, this was funded by the grant. Uh, you may see on the bottom ledger there, a loan match. You're going to see the, uh, down there on that pretty close, the bottom line there, it says in-kind match, fifty-six thousand. That was Commissioner Flores's, uh, actually, his employees, plus the part-time employees that worked there for a few weeks, putting in that water line, we documented all that, uh, payroll and equipment. That was a contribution to the grant. And then in addition, uh, there was a cash match there, also an amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty cents, for, uh, they actually purchased, uh, ten additional fire hydrants and put those in. That was a cash contribution. And when all the dust settles, uh, TRC engineers, their contract is forty-five thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. It actually be a nine hundred and seventy dollar match, uh, to make up the difference there in their contract. What was in the grant was forty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, it was a nine hundred and seventy dollars difference. And, uh, so basically, we're closing this out. And, uh, kinda wanted to give y'all a recap of how those funds were spent.
You're, you're showing a match, and maybe I missed it right now, you just showed a match, you said the sixteen and then the fifty-six. In precinct one, though, there's more, right?
Sir?
In precinct one, there would be more of a match.
On this particular project, uh, no. It was, uh, not a, the only match originally was, uh, identified-
Originally, then, I guess the key word is originally.
Waterline, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It was in kind.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you leaving eleven thousand?
Uh, no, we're, uh, drawing that down, we got the final drawdowns, yeah. Okay? Those have to actually be in by Ju-, uh, July the ninth, okay? Carl, well, and we have that nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollar grant to finish the Escondido project, right? The nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollar grant is, I'm sitting over here in the escrow account from the Texas Water Development Board, is for what we would call Phase Two of the Escondido project. And that's strictly for planning, acquisition and design of the project, uh, in addition to this first phase, going out here to Escondido, running the water line, putting the water tank up, uh, booster pump building, hydrodynamics pump, and, uh, actually tying in about, uh, fourteen households there along Escondido and over to Rancho Del Rio, okay?
So, basically, I mean, we, like, the last time we talked about that money sitting there, it was like we had not been reimbursed, but in, in, in reality, we didn't, we actually wrote the check out of a different account, so we didn't need to be reimbursed.
We hadn't even started that project.
No, no, what I'm saying is, though, we were concerned about the project, we weren't getting reimbursed, but yet, what, the pipe and everything we were ordered, it was being paid from-
These grants.
These grants, yeah.
Well, the court set aside, in this current budget, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete that part of it. Yeah, we'll go get to that here in just a second.
And, and that's, that was my question earlier, it wasn't showing that we'd actually, we'd done more than-
Right, okay. Okay.
I'm glad you understand it, because, okay.
The next one is, uh, county received a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, again, from the Texas Department of Agriculture, okay? And this was a step grant, okay? And this grant actually bought all the pipe. It was a materials-only project, okay? And you may see there that, uh, the county has a contract with Ferguson Supplies. Their contract is in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, okay? That is for materials only. Pipe, valves, fittings, uh, some water meters. And, uh, currently, if you look up on top, over on the balance, there's eighty thousand left in there to draw. That's for fifteen thousand more feet of pipe that has not yet been delivered. They've actually delivered about fifteen thousand feet. And that fifteen thousand feet goes from Irene Street out there to Escondido. That's about half of the pipe that's been delivered. So, there's still fifteen thousand feet of pipe to be delivered. And when that's delivered, uh, that pipe will be paid for with that balance over there of eighty thousand dollars, okay? Now, the only, uh, only match to this project would be that if we, if the entire shipment of pipe is delivered, within the county will have a four thousand, uh, four thousand, sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cent match to fulfill the contract with Ferguson for all the pipe and materials that are in their contract. And that'd be about, maybe around a thousand feet of pipe, that's about five dollars a foot, okay? That, that was sort of the heart of the project. Uh, that's the main aorta there, that's, uh, getting the water from over here down the side of the loop, out there to Escondido. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay? Then, the county has one more, okay? This was another grant, it was three grants, three grants in succession there, from TDA. This is a five hundred thousand dollar grant to complete the improvements out there. And so, we've got the water tank out there with one grant, we got the water pipe going out there with another grant. And then this grant actually paid for the bores, there's a bore underneath Liberty Drive, there's a bore underneath Escondido that's been completed. They actually tying that water tank in today with that bore, I went by there this morning. Uh, also paid for the booster station out there, the booster pumps and all that, the electrical. The, uh, there's a pressure tank that's been installed out there, chain link fence, uh, and all the, uh, number of their purchases. Now, you may remember that when the county awarded that, uh, the part that this contractor wasn't able to do to satisfy the, the grant was the water line over to Escondido, I mean, over to Rancho Del Rio. So, we deleted that portion out, we did a contract modification, and we moved the funds from that into the water improvements construction. So, we're gonna use the pipe that is in another project to extend the line- So we're gonna use the pipe that is this other project to extend the line out there to Rancho Del Rio. Now, when the county awarded this project to the contractor, TTD LLC, their contract, man, I got the wrong one up there. I apologize for that. Wish somebody would've said something.
I was trying to see how your numbers were working.
Yeah, that ain't gonna work. Hold on a second. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. There you go. This one's not, see that little judge?
I can't see it either.
Yeah. Well, it has some problems on this one. The font's pretty small. And anyhow, this was the grant, now five-hundred thousand dollars. You see the contracts there? You got the contractor, TTD LLC. He's the general contractor to put in the booster station. He also put in the tank, again, though the tank was paid for with a different grant. The pressure tank and other purchases there. Also, there's a permit there, thirty-five hundred dollars went to Union Pacific for the permit there to get underneath the railroad. Sherwood surveying, they did some surveying out there on the easement going to Rancho Del Rio Loop across Mr. Macosa's property. That was four thousand dollars. The engineering contract, the Esser and Company there. And then there was a fence that the county had constructed in lieu of paying for the easement going out there. Okay? Now, this particular project was when the county, when the county awarded to the general contractor, TTD LLC, it was at that time that the county budgeted or obligated a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to complete the project. Okay? And you'll see there that about a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand of that will go to the general contractor when he's actually completed all the improvements and paid in full. And then there was fourteen thousand dollars that went towards the fence. Now, in addition to that, there's been a little bit, a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars has been used for other little purchases, such like for some sand, sirens and stuff like that. So we'll provide the court a complete breakdown to get closer to completing the project. I just kind of wanted to demonstrate to the court, those three grants and how the use of all those funds were obligated.
You don't need any action or nothing, it's just for information purposes, right?
Yeah, just for information purposes. Any questions on any of it?
Looks good. A lot of money.
That took care of number six also, Judge. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Commissioner Nettleton's not here. Let's move, item, move item to item fifteen. Discuss the possible action for a full modification of the what fiscal year twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen operating budget. The request includes estimated cost of one thousand, five hundred dollars for general office supplies expenditure. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is basically what I found when I got here, less than halfway through the fiscal year and eighty-one percent of the budget spent from office supplies. So we're doing our best to reuse and recycle, but there's a few things we need to pick up on. We'd like to make it through the end of the fiscal year.
Have you gone back on the encumbrances and tried to clean some of that out?
Well, we've been working on that steadily.
Roy's actually handed me a couple, a bunch of the reports from my department to try to get the encumbrances cleaned up, we can go through them. Have you done that with him?
Yes, I know. My new admin has been working on that, yeah.
Where's somebody coming from?
I reviewed her budget this morning before I came over here. She has thirty-six hundred dollars in travel and thirteen thousand dollars in books.
Well, I mean, we could take it from the travel because I don't, we don't really have any plans to travel. You did that of the book budget.
I'll do the travel.
Okay.
Do the one you want.
Do the travel.
I'll make a motion that we can let him move the fifteen hundred in travel and move it over to office supplies. Just for the library.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any more discussion? Not all those in favor, Nicky, by saying yes.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Five zero. All right, we're gonna go back to item number eight. Consider an act upon contract agreement between Esser and Company Consulting LLC in Valverde County for a recreation park, open space master plan and authorize contract assignment.
We've gone out for bids on this item. We needed it in order to be able to apply for some Texas Parks and Wildlife grants. It gives us a better foot in the door to get some of these grants for parks and stuff like that. I think the contract was for the amount of, and I got a, six thousand? This gives us the ability to get this master plan in place and then go out and apply for funding for Texas Parks and Wildlife to improve parks for ball fields or other parks or open spaces.
Real quick, were you done? I'm sorry. No, I was gonna say if, in your planning, if you'll visit with the secretary from the fairgrounds, she's got phone numbers to the different leads that participate on county properties. And that might be, might give you an idea of what is it that we might need, what is it that we have right now. I don't know if that would be part of your scope, but it seemed like you'd want to know what they're doing. I mean, the fields that the county actually has right now and the amount of practice fields and stuff that the county maintains. And give you an idea of how many fields, American National and the football and soccer and all them, what they might want.
What our scope would provide is a complete assessment of everything that's currently available within the city of Del Rio and also the county. We'll do a complete assessment on that. We'd also like to gather input from the public, kind of, maybe through a survey or an assessment. Maybe we'll do it on the county website somewhere where people could go there and actually reply back as to their preference, if they want trails or if they want a swimming pool or whatever the situation may be. That could be a way to maybe accommodate that, where we can get some input. And so, yeah, Commissioner, we'll actually do a complete assessment and then also come up with a recommendation based on either the survey or the assessments that we've done and come up with a plan as to additional or maybe improved, enhanced facilities for the county in general.
Are you going to identify the flood plains also, the flood areas?
We have those already mapped.
Okay.
Yeah, we have that in our office. We've got all the flood areas mapped within both the city and the county.
Those flood maps, do they come from FEMA?
Yeah, yeah.
FEMA maps?
They're firm maps, yeah, FEMA flood plain maps.
I know we don't have an item budgeted for this.
Does the, can the court take some action in the prior meeting when you hire Carl to review? Kind of take over all the grants?
We're gonna take, we're gonna deal with that. We haven't yet, but...
There's an item. There's an item here.
There's an item that you have on there to deal with it. But this is to create this master plan. I'm gonna make a motion to approve it and to authorize to take the money out, the six thousand, out of contingency unless we have, we don't have another location.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. You have a question, discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
One of the things, real quick, and I think Commissioner Nettleton, you were gonna visit with Frank Larson, maybe about some property.
Yes.
Carl, if you can get with Commissioner Nettleton on, we might have some property. Maybe you can put this into our scope of... I'm sorry. Commissioner Nettleton's gonna visit with, visit with an individual that might have some property, willing to donate some property or something. I mean, if we come up with an idea of how many more fields we need, then this is where we could put them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Flores, welcome. Oh, we tabled item nine, so you would discuss that one. Discuss the possible action regarding Amistad and Kirsten Road project.
Judge, as y'all know, last meeting a couple of weeks ago, the commissioner requested for me to call Anna Duncan, the Tech dot, concerning this project and for us to change the grade of the road. We will need a new set of plans, and those plans will cost fifty-six thousand dollars. There is no way if they were gonna give us commission to draw up a bid without a new set of plans. So I will make a motion to terminate this project for lack of funds and the money that we need to pay back to the state to be paid to P G funds.
There's a motion, a second. Any other question, discussion?
Just in reference to Commissioner Flores's deal, I actually spoke with Anna Duncan also. And again, asked her if there was any money, if we could go up her bid. And she said, the way the plans are right now, that she would recommend that she would say no. There was a discussion that had taken so long, and I did have the discussion with her that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we've had two commissioners, the only constant in all this was her. So, I mean, I think we've tried. The other day when I gave the numbers and I brought them, Commissioner Flores had said it was one, like, one point two. It's actually one point five, Commissioner, so the money that we would need is higher than what you had thought. There was a one million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-four, is what he estimated was paving. And one million, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-four was without paving. These are numbers that, at the meeting that I went with Commissioner Flores, were handed out, I think, by Tech dot and the engineer there. So I agree at this point that there's just too much money and I don't know where we can get it.
And I was there with Commissioner Flores and Mr. Padilla when we met with Melissa and Gustavo to see what we could do with the money. And they said, "No, you gotta use it for that and you do have to have a new set of plans." So I concur what Commissioner Flores was saying. Any other comments?
Commissioner Flores, were y'all talking about the difference between going up for bids or awarding bids? Does she see a distinction in that?
She saw a distinction in it, but she was real clear on, they weren't funding anything. If we went out for bids, it would be on our nickel. We wouldn't get reimbursed. And over the, over the course of the week, visiting with her and then I personally put some numbers together, she brought up the idea of the county doing it. Force, what's it called, this, force build or force whatever?
Force account.
First what?
Force account.
Force account. And like I told her, we're still over half a million dollars short. And that would be even with the county building it. I mean, I spoke with the lady in Washington. She's head of the transportation. And she couldn't believe that this, this project had been on seven years. And like I told her, I said, "It's gone through two commissioners. In my opinion, it's not the commissioners. The only constant has been Anna Duncan." I mean, you know, I visited with her twice. And I actually got to the point where it was just easier to hang up and better for me to hang up because I was getting flustered with her. But I, I think we've tried everything in the world to get this thing done. And if we were to do it, even, I think Commissioner Flores had brought up at one point, what would it take to build it? Me and him went out there and we looked at it and taking some of the numbers on the concrete and the culverts that need, from the architect's plan and then using some of the numbers that we did to figure it, we'd still be short over half a million dollars. You know, I, I just don't know how you, how you, where we come up with the money.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any more discussion? But not all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody, five zero. Thank you. All right, let's go to the agenda.
You don't want to teach?
No. Yeah, he canceled. Discuss the possible action regarding the oversight of France for the county, Commissioner.
Just, we put this on, and there's one specific, but I would like to table this until after executive session. I've got some questions.
Okay.
Advice.
Okay, then we'll go in executive session and pursuant to the Texas Department of Health, five five one point zero seven one. Parenthesis one, parenthesis sixteen.
No, you scratched.
You scratched. Hi.
I will, we'll go back to that item. I'll make a motion to grant an exemption on the procurement to hire Carl Esser to handle all of the grants for Valverde County, administer them at a rate of eighty-five per hour. And if any money is available within the grants to pay the administration, that that money comes out of there.
I'll second that. There's a motion, a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, nobody, this is four zero. Commissioner Flores has to leave because he's still, his son is still waiting for surgery. Nothing else, then this means turn.
We're starting to have a lottery. Damn, we even got into the budget. Every grant is over here.
So what are we doing on chairs?
He's gonna, he's gonna...
What color did he wear?